Good evening. This is the Rutland Town School Board Reorganization Meeting. Since we do not have an officially elected Chair, as Superintendent, I get to begin the meeting. So it's six o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
The Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is to nominate a Board Chair. I'd like to open the floor for any nominations.
I'd like to nominate Tim Hammond for Board Chair.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I would like to call for, in discussion? Oh, alright. Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, the motion is passed by unanimous votes. Congratulations, Tim. We turn it over to you.
Thank you. Do I need to reorg packet? Alright, well, thank you for that. Welcome Jill and Linda to the, to the Board, as we begin a new year. So, alright, so I guess I will take a nomination for Vice Chair.
Can I nominate Colin?
Any others? Alright, hearing, hearing none. Can I get a yes for Colin for Vice Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any nominations for Clerk?
How many positions are there?
Those three. Any interest for Clerk?
I'll nominate Jeff.
I'll nominate Linda.
What is it that the Clerk has to do? Can you tell me?
I think they just take minutes if we have.
If, if there's a need for a minute, CEO takes minutes, but.
If there are any, because we do.
Alright, I'll nominate Linda.
I'd be glad to. I'd like to do that.
Any others? Yes for Linda?
Yes.
On the GRSU voting members, I'd like to have myself, Colin, and Linda, are you interested
in that role?
And could you tell me what that responsibility would be?
It's additional meeting a month. It's basically the Central Office, Special Education, you know, budgets and just working with the other two districts.
Would that be my committee?
Uh, no, I mean.
Additional to the committee work.
There's additional, but committee work is, what would you say, maybe one additional meeting a month at that. It's not overly cumbersome.
Correct, we're wrong, Chris, but the Negotiations Committee isn't necessarily made up of the SU Board.
Correct.
So it can be another member from Rutland Town to be on negotiations.
Correct.
It's not that.
Okay, that would be fine then. Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Alright, regular meeting schedule, second Tuesday of the month, is that still the plan of the overall SU? Chris, are we trying to stay?
Our, our goal would be to keep the same schedule, yes.
Okay. Which we're looking at April 8th for our next meeting, second Tuesday of every month.
Yes. And what Christine will do for the April Board meeting, we'll print out all of the dates for you, like, on the calendar, and then for any conflicts, I know we typically run into problems with, say, a school holiday or something, we just make some adjustments. We can do that at the next meeting if you need to.
Alright, so setting an annual Board Retreat, I think we should table that until the next meeting, we kind of get closer and get a little guidance on what our, our plan is over the next several months. Just so you guys don't plan anything fun and exciting, you know, town meeting next year, March 2nd, 2026, at seven o'clock, that's when we will be delivering our next budget. And do I need a, a motion on the Roberts rules? I do, right? If we want to use, okay.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we adopt the small board rules.
Any discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anonymous. Everyone, let's see, has everyone signed or at least gotten the packet for the VSBA Code of Ethics? And we'll just turn those back into you, Chris, at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Identify locations where agendas and minutes will be posted, which currently is at the school and Central Office. Is that, that's correct, right?
Correct. Do we, does Rutland Town do the post office as well?
The post office? We don't have a Rutland Town post office.
Yeah, I think it was just those two locations.
What two locations?
The school and.
Central Office.
Central Office.
Central Office, yeah, that's what I remember.
We also post on the websites.
On the websites.
Yeah.
Affirming choice of Attorney. It's been Chris Leepold and I'm under the assumption we'll.
Yes, I think Chris Leepold has agreed to sign it for one, another year.
Identify media sources, Rutland Herald. Last year, we did Front Port Forum, or Front Porch Forum. I don't know a lot about that, to be honest, but at this point, we could.
I do believe that's something that Tina managed, but that's something that the Board would like to do. I know that Wells Springs does Front Porch Forum, it's just a single user account to post, but I think Christine McGinnis could walk whoever through that.
Okay. Alright, authorization, or authorize the administration to request and expend available grant funds from the Agency of Education, as well as state and federal funds. I'll take a motion for that.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorize Board to borrow funds for, for the, do I need the UUSD, which I think means a district for us.
RTSD, right.
Pending receipt of payment from state education funds, which is tax, expected tax funds coming in, right?
So, right, in order to pay bills, we have to borrow till we receive money back from the state. That's all it's authorized us to do.
All those in favor on that?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay. Authorize the Board Chair to sign Director's Orders and other documents on behalf of the Board as necessary, which I will abstain and take a vote.
So moved.
Alright.
I think I gotta make the motion. We made the motion.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finance Committee. Colin, you want to join me on that?
Yeah.
Maybe since we're. So Negotiations, Colin, myself, and Jill, would you be willing to enter in the negotiation piece, since you got that through your term, I think, right?
Sure.
Okay. We're about to embark on.
Good news, we're in the middle of negotiations.
Okay.
We meet the first meeting is March 24th.
Okay.
So, I'll get that invite to you, Jill.
Thank you.
And we went to three Board Members. It used to be two, we went to three, so we have a, we have a lot of participants, I guess. Policy Committee. Jeff, you have been on that, or you, you've done a lot of the work lately, so you should reap the benefits of less, if you're.
I'll do that, yep.
Linda, how do you feel about that? Are you pretty comfortable?
What's the other option?
Um, not necessarily another option particularly, but they have a, from what I understand with the policies, they have a pretty good system flowing.
Yeah, I could do that. I'm familiar with that. Good.
Yeah, you would have a, a pretty good feel on how the, how the policies unfold in real life.
Yes.
I think. Building some grounds, I, last year, I believe it was Colin and Jeff, there was, I don't think there was any real action to really undertake, but definitely, if you guys want to continue, at least be the front runners on that.
Yeah.
And Hiring Committee. We would need one for that, which I've been on before, is complex at times with my schedule, so that's my only time I've.
But Tim, that, you attended so many, even because we found out that you, we need a Board Member for professional staff, and at that time, we didn't realize that, so we had for support staff. So Tim attended a lot of interviews for custodians, paras, etc.
Coaches.
Coaches, and also we're like, oh, you want to be professional, poor Tim was working on the phone, like, yeah, so thank you for your time and help with that.
Sure. I mean, I'm.
Linda might be good at that.
Yeah. I've done that before, and, yeah, I like everybody, so.
If you're interested, that's fine, I can put myself in and you can be the alternate if I just can't.
Yeah.
Make it up to you.
Or maybe we could see, like, separate out what the different positions are to interview.
I'll put us both.
Because there's a lot.
So I'll, I'll either both of you?
Sure.
Okay, because we're in the thick of it.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, Communication Person, one. These are a couple of new additions, right?
So I do believe Tina had asked for this to be included because of the work she's been doing with Front Porch Forum and the website or the emails that were being sent out, so there's someone who still works as a liaison with that.
Yeah, it is important, it's a cool.
You want to take that? Okay.
Yeah.
Spearheaded at the SU level, so I might as well, like, just jump on the grenade.
Okay. And then, a liaison between the School Board and the Select Board.
Retain that.
Okay, that's covered. Am I supposed to give this back to you? Because.
Sure, because I'll, I'll give that to Christine.
Um, could you possibly, I'll talk to you after the meeting, but could you, like, send me another copy of this and I'll write it?
Yeah, if you want to send it over, what I could do is I could just type into this, the document for Christine, and I'll give it back to you tonight. I'll just do that right now.
My college professors did not like me.
Good luck, good luck.
Oh, that's nothing, we're teachers. Clear as day.
Alright, alright, so moving on, I would entertain an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Any additions, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any staffer student highlights to speak of for tonight?
That's why I'm here.
Alright, welcome.
Yes, I don't know where you want me, but I can be right here if you want. This is Snow Snakes that Maurice and I are happy to share about. She unfortunately couldn't make it because she is on another board that meets at this exact same home, but she wishes she could.
Thank you.
I can cheer Colby for the night, thank you.
So Snow Snakes is a unit that we've done for several years now, and it's cross-curricular, so it allows Maurice and I to blend some science, some math, as well as some social studies work. So Snow Snakes is a winter game that dates back more than 500 years, before the arrival of the Europeans. Originally, it was a competition between indigenous community members and neighboring tribes. Snow Snake still brings people together today. On that first page, you can see an old painting of that and then a modern day photo. The aim of the game is to throw along stick, and I brought a couple of them to share. These are students that they made this year. They sand them, they add some weights, they add some oils to slick them up, and the whole point is to throw it down a trough in the snow and ice farther than one's opponent. So the goal was to kind of throw it in an underhand fashion and slide it along that snow as far as it can go. The unique name derives from the serpentine movements of the sticks over the snow, so hence the name, Snow Snake. In this project, we expanded on our indigenous peoples' social studies unit and also incorporated the engineering design process. So one thing that we do later in the year in fifth grade is do some engineering designing water filters, and this is kind of a preview of the engineering design process where they get to build on what they learn about indigenous peoples and try out the engineering design process for the first time. After reading articles and watching videos about Snow Snakes, students were divided into five teams per class, and they began the building process. Each group got one two to four foot stick or piece of wood. They sketched their design, they decided on which items they wanted to purchase to make their snake, and then they created a procedure, so again, all part of that engineering design process. Students spent three classes planning and constructing their snakes, then it was finally race day. So a couple weeks ago now, we had a beautiful Friday morning, we went out. Mike, you joined us out there and took some of these photos, actually. They braved the cold, they participated in this event, which encourages laughing, heckling, competition, and overall community building. Each team was able to throw their snake twice, which gave us tons of data to record, so we measured the distances that they traveled. We measured in meters and centimeters, which allowed us to practice and work with decimals, which builds off of some stuff we've done recently in my class. And then, yeah, had some awesome results, they worked well together, had a lot of fun. And then after calculating our averages and graphing our teams averages, so our red crew and our blue crew, both our two fifth grade groups, we found that the red class had won, so they had an overall higher average distance traveled than the blue crew. But interestingly, there was one blue team that actually had the farthest single throw of the day, so both teams kind of had something to celebrate, so.
Nice.
That was a great activity. We've done it for a number of years and hope to continue.
Very cool.
Any questions?
I think it's great that you've shared to make learning come alive for people that are listening.
Yeah, it's a really fun one to do.
Interesting, yeah.
They love these waxes.
Yes, there, well, it's like oils that we use instead, so not like actual wax, but there's a mineral oil that we use. There's another one that we've used in years past, but it's like extra messy, so we figured mineral oil would work.
The one that stains?
Yeah, it might have been that one, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we were like, yeah, I think this other oil does just fine.
Yeah.
Who gets to keep the sticks? No, I bet they're going to fight over them.
So we've had so many students out lately, that that's why I actually still have these. We've been ready for everyone to be back, so that they can meet in their teams.
Just wash your hands when you leave.
Yep. But the hope is soon, they can all meet back in their teams and democratically figure out who gets to keep the snake, so.
That's cool.
Yeah. But there's a lot of contenders that want it, so hopefully we can figure that out.
They'll figure it out. I like that problem solving.
But anyway.
Do they get to keep the sticks, or do you, do they have to?
Yeah, they get to keep them. There'll be one member of each group that keeps each one.
A good walking stick.
Yeah.
Do you keep the data over the years? So can you document, like, the longest throw ever?
I haven't actually, no. No.
Put it up as a record.
Good idea. We, we have a ballpark, because when we construct the track, we're always like, about this far is about as far as we expect them to go. But, yeah, that's something I've not logged year after year, so that would be an interesting one.
Cool.
That, that's like when I did a 40-yard dash for our flag football team, you know, like, my finger wasn't, oh, man, you know, get to the combine, you know?
Oh, yeah. The competition nature of it motivated them all. They loved it.
No doubt.
Very nice. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for having me. You guys can keep those if you want, but I'll take the snakes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colby.
Alright. Next up, Teacher Staff and Community Comments. Anyone from the community have any comments to share? Seeing one person. Moving on, Old Business Budget Recap. Woo-hoo!
Yeah.
Right? Applause to the community and, you know, the community of Rutland Town and the school community for supporting our budget for this year.
Whoop. Now it's focused, sorry. Camera was like staring at me.
That was the point.
So many thanks for that.
I think they haven't, Louis isn't here, they haven't set the yield yet completely. We'll know when all the budgets pass across the state and we'll get the official numbers, but, you know, preliminary, it looks like we're looking at 11% reduction in property taxes on your education portion of your tax bill, which is in Rutland Town, everyone's biggest portion, so thanks to my fellow Board Members, and I know the, the two of you weren't, but you certainly, I know how you voted, so we appreciate all the support. But next year will obviously present a different set of challenges, as we know, from year to year, the state's going to change the formula, so we got to keep up the hard work, but I appreciate all you guys working hard and getting people out to vote.
Continue to be prudent in our, our decision making, I feel like, and, you know, within that budget, you know, we had the asbestos and the HVAC, which I hope will quickly get a move on, right?
Yeah.
So that we can.
Are we allowed to bid now?
It's like Jeff's dream, right? 30 years, you've been waiting for this.
Are we allowed to bid now?
Thank you.
That we have a past budget?
Yeah, Kelly, Kelly drafted one and shared it with Louis and Chris, and I think it's to get somebody here to walk through it, instead of, you know, listing every little thing. So is that out, Chris? I know he shared it with, that's not my area of expertise. Do you know if that bid is out for people?
I haven't, I checked with Louis.
Yeah, I know that he's on vacation, so, okay.
Contractors are starting to get hungry again.
Yeah.
So, it's good.
No, it's, you know, feels really good. Makes it, still have work to do and have to continue to, you know, reach out and lend an ear to, you know, to, you know, the, the ones that are still, still a little discouraged with, with the budget, but, you know, we're moving in the right direction, I do believe, so.
That's something. It's really nice for Jill and I to start on the board with the past budget. I was so relieved because it's so much work to figure out where cuts would be made, which are impossible sometimes, and then do all the work to pass it. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, townspeople, for passing the budget, and Colin, you've got your work cut out for you communicating, because that's when people will know. We're going to work to make a sound budget. That's our goal all year, right?
Absolutely.
Excellent. No, no new business on this agenda, considering most of our time was spent getting to, to town meeting day over the past couple of months. So, so moving on to the consent agenda, I would look for a motion for approval of the warrants.
I'll make that motion, approve the warrants.
Any discussion?
Could you explain what that means? Because what, what are the warrants? I saw that on the agenda, but I didn't, oh, all of the expenditures?
Yeah.
Oh, I get it.
For the month, yeah.
Yeah, I read it. So, yeah, I could see why everything needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on February 11th and March 3rd, which is a special meeting.
Yeah.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Superintendent Report.
Thanks. There's a lot of information in here. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. I do want to, you know, let's congratulate Linda and Jill on, you know, welcome to the Board. I know that there was a mention of this around new Board Member orientation on board. One of the new things that we're going to try to do is, I know that next week before the GRCSU Board Meeting, we're going to meet with the Executive Committee, which is the Board Chairs, where I try to set a monthly meetings in which we really work with new and existing Board Members around, just around Board Governance, around certain topics, helping better understand, you know, how, how this all works, and how, you know, how they can be more effective Board Members. As you go into budgeting season, what that looks like, you know, we've got, you know, warrants, what that means, just answering a lot of the questions, because as you're new, there's a pretty steep learning curve to a lot of this, and really understanding role of Boards, what you, what you can, can't do, if you have a question, where it's appropriate to ask, requested materials. So we'll, we'll go through all of that, but our goal would be in April, the April Board Meetings, to kind of roll out what that looks like for all of our local Boards. But it will be an ongoing thing. In the past, we did a short meeting with just the Board Chair and the Superintendents, and then it's kind of like your, you know, there was a, a packet or sheet, but this really is just looking at some of the issues that we've had across all of our Boards, just really understanding really what the strong effective Board Governance is and how we can work with Members to, to, to better understand roles and responsibilities, chain of command, how to handle certain things. So that's what we're trying to do. And it also will help with the, is, Linda and Jill and I have seen this, but the state has rolled out district quality standards, which does require more training being offered to Boards, and so this would make, kind of check that box as well, for us as well, so. But, and it would be open, would not be mandatory to anyone who would want to access that. Also in the, in my report, but it's also in the Board Folder, is part of the Budget Communication Plan, the final piece, thankfully, as I said, our budget's passed, so once again, thanks to all the community members, to our families for voting yes and supporting our schools and our students and our staff. There is a survey in there, it's a draft survey, that we want to send out to communities, just to, just get some feedback on, you know, just how well we did, if there are things that we're missing, just so as we begin looking at our Budget Communication Plan for next year, we have some feedback. And while the same draft is in each Board, Board Folders, we understand that Rutland Town may have a question that might be a little bit different than, say, Wells Springs or Corey Valley, and so the Board can adjust that. So if there's any feedback around that, those eight questions, survey questions, please feel free to shoot myself an email, and, you know, we can go through that, and then we can provide a final draft at the April Board Meeting for approval, and then once it's approved, we can get that sent out right away to our community members. That's the settlement. And there's a lot in here, obviously, around the, what's going on around education. There is legislative reports, it's pretty lengthy. It is something which we, you know, I know Colin and I have talked about this a couple of times, and I think it's something which is important for us to really be aware of what's going on, and just really take a look at, and not just read an article in the newspaper, but, you know, VSB sends out information, take a look at what's going on, and they have the, you know, the other day, they had a lunchtime webinar around, you know, legislative webinar, which was interesting, because when Representative Corneiser asked, was asked about if she, under these current proposals, rejection around how much of the workforce would be out of a job, and she, they said at least half. And so I think it's just important information for us to understand. Now, she did say, as you start to, you know, walk things back and you look at, you know, other considerations, you know, position will be added, but it's just important for a Board to be aware of what's going on, particularly just because it doesn't just impact Rutland Town District, but also just the Rutland community as well. So, if there's any questions, please feel free to reach out to myself or to Louis, we'll be more happy to try to answer your questions the best we can. So. I know that on March 20th, there is a meeting scheduled with SU and SD Chairs and Superintendents, and from that, we are looking to potentially schedule a community forum pretty quickly, which we invite Board Members, community Members to, and legislators to kind of talk about some of these plans. So Colin, if there's anything you want to add to any of that, but I'm not trying to gloss over it, but there's, there's a lot in there, so, you know.
Yeah, I think that, that's very important, I mean, it's kind of what. I mean, it's kind of what we're, two new board members and the rest of us, what we're faced with is the state dictating, obviously, massive changes coming down the pipe with, in my assertion, without our input at the moment. So we're trying to, trying to spearhead it from at least the Rutland County aspect to getting all of our local SUs together, board members, you know, starting appropriately, you know, executives, down to the whole board, to at least communities where if we can come up with a plan, A, it meets some of the state's guidelines, try to save some money. But, you know, if we can come up with a plan on consolidation, what we want to have happen, at least we'll be in a better stance to come back to the state and say, hey, this is what, you know, our local experts and what our people like, instead of being dictated. Here's, here's how we're gonna chop up the map, here's what's gonna happen. And now's the time. I mean, as you guys, if you are paying attention, the train's left the station and seem to be gaining momentum, I'd rather at least say our piece, come up with some solutions, whether they take it or not, at least we won't be sitting there saying what happened. I think, I think all the SU soups all have a lot of great knowledge. There's a lot of board members that are around, a lot of just people with knowledge and want to see, I think my goal and our goal is that, let's start from the kids first, and then we can build it up versus the state seemingly is just taking a financial calculation and what they want the money to look like for our property taxpayers. And, and the kids are gonna be left in the dust on what does that look like versus, hey, let's, let's keep, the cornerstone of Vermont education is our kids. Let's keep that in mind first, and then we can reverse engineer the money from there, not, not vice versa. And I would just, to the first part of Chris's point of what it is to be a board member and a school board member, two of the biggest things are just to remember, you know, if three of us are in a place, that's a quorum. So just be cognizant that we, if three of us have stance, that's, you have some different public reporting that's unfortunately thrust upon us. And two, you guys are gonna be thrust with a lot of questions from the public. Just run some stuff by Chris, that's the stuff you can learn, or Sarah, just what's appropriate to talk about and what's appropriate to just deflect, is now you have a different role where parents, friends are gonna be, you know, especially, a lot of them love to talk personnel or specific things where you just say, hey, you know, either we gotta do this at the meeting or I'm gonna deflect you to, to talk to our admin. So those are the only two things I would caution you as new board members to learn. But ask any of us questions. I'm so thankful you both signed up for this, condolences. So, but, thank you.
You could, Chris.
Yeah.
Principals report.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for voting on our budget. I was anxious. I'm glad it went through the first time. So I won't read through, I'll just highlight a few things. So VIT cap, huge thanks to Mike, Joe Bertoloni's help, our kids, and obviously our teachers. They've been given formative assessments and practice tests, and we started Monday. Yes, a few parents have mentioned it was daylight savings time. Everybody's looked at that schedule for so long, we didn't even think of it. So next year, we won't start on daylight savings time. But again, there's always next year and we're always learning something. We have a number of kids that have some artwork at the Chaffee Art Center. Ms. Cornell and Mrs. Neary are headed to St. Mike's with a few of our kids for the spelling bee competition again. Our PLC leaders, our leadership team met to discuss VIT cap, review feedback from the schedule from our teachers and our students, and to finalize our PLC meetings for March and April and talk about, believe it or not, kindergarten registration, preschool registration, graduation date, all those fun things. We'll review some of our awesome FastBridge scores in just a little bit. EST has been rocking and rolling. Mike finished with the EST committee data reviews before February break, and then they're back on schedule for EST meetings. There's a list of things that Kelly's been up to for the physical plant that I review all of those things. There's a number of dates of happenings and celebrations, upcoming events. One highlight is that Lieutenant Governor has invited the green team to Montpelier. So Mike's gonna stay back, and I'm gonna go with Mrs. Moriarty with the students. They're really excited. So that bus request was filled out today, and we're just waiting for parent permission forms to come back. As you had heard, we have a large number of staff and student illnesses. It's everywhere across the state, so I just plead with parents to please do not send your kids to school that are sick and with a fever, because it's just continuing to spread. So we can clean as much as possible, but a lot of these illnesses are airborne. And the kids are usually honest when they come. They'll say, I have a fever, but mom had to work. So I know it's hard, it's hard, but we're, we're almost there. We are always short-staffed, so anybody that would love to sub, this is a great place to work, please contact Cindy at central office. We just interviewed today for Mr. Rose's replacement for PE Health. That position is still posted. We're still looking for a school nurse, and we have a contract that'll come to April board meeting for a boys' lacrosse coach that we have. Our enrollment's strong, it's listed there, and if you guys don't have any questions, we'll get into the FastBridge.
I have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
Did you go to Montpelier recently?
I did, yes. Over February break, I was asked to testify to the education committee in Montpelier. And I brought my two kids with me, which was great. You can view the recording and them fighting over a toy behind me. And that was, that was interesting. But I was very happy to speak, and they're looking to just hear from people boots in the ground, and they were interested in hearing from me specifically because of the high administrative turnover, they said, and the demographic of Rutland Town, that we have strong enrollment, pre-K to eight, our middle school model, the number of tuition students here. So all good things. So I was able to talk a little bit about the homeless population and how that has definitely had an impact. Taxes, money, but really just our amazing team here. I mean, we have such an incredible team of teachers. They asked me some tough questions. I was misquoted in a few places. They asked me about class sizes, and I had shared it really depends on the cohort of kids, and they left that part out. But yes, I was in Montpelier over February break, and it was interesting. And it was great to bring my children, so they could just see how all of this works. Yeah.
See those function of Montpelier up close?
Yeah.
Fighting over toys.
Yeah. Actually, my kid did leave his Rubik's Cube there. So I said, it's purposeful, he left it. You need, because I want people to come visit. I think you really get a feel for it when you're in the building. So I just said, perfect, he left it there, that means you need to come here and come hang out and spend some time, from the kitchen to preschool and everywhere in between. Yeah.
Just quickly before FastBridge, I was just wondering about, so who's coaching the girls' lacrosse team?
Shannon Moriarty. Yeah, she, she did it last year, and that was, we almost didn't have a lacrosse team. So she has experience coaching basketball, and she taught herself, I mean, we begged her, we're like, can, she went on YouTube to teach herself lacrosse, because we had nobody to coach, nobody to coach.
And who, and it was Corey last year for boys?
Correct, and he's not gonna do it anymore. He's, he coaches everything, and he needs to take a couple, I've been telling him that, take a couple things off his plate, so that's why that position is posted.
Got it. I was, I was wondering if he was, he was not, perfect. FastBridge it is.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. So I do want to say a huge thanks to everybody that helped Colin and Jill and all of our teachers and parents for Lifetime Sports. It's a ton of work, Colby and Keith as well. It, logistically, Jeff was helping drive bus. I mean, it is a ton of work. But to me, it's really priceless, and the comments that so many of these kids say how appreciative they are is just endearing. And especially as they get older, you know, I shared last year, we had a couple of kids that took the bus up to Pico, and that's really a better place for them to be than at home. And similarly, this year as well. And I have a couple of friends that work at Pico that help ski lesson, that help with lessons. And I said, you're just saying this because I work there. And they're like, no. And Colin's heard it from some instructors. The compliments that we've gotten from our kids, now, nobody's perfect, there's a few things we need to address, just the polite, respectful, encouraging across the board is just remarkable. So thanks to parents and teachers for continuing those good values with our kids, and these experiences are great. FastBridge, okay. So we give, these are screeners, these are three times a year. So I'm not gonna go through the, I think just looking at the graphs are a little bit easier, and Mike chime in. So we have, uh... Just go to CBM reading.
Give me a page, it's easier.
Set.
Go to page six. Yep. This is the first one for graphs. Do you want to go to graphs first?
Yeah, but is my
Could we make it small?
Paper off? No, it's not.
No, you have that one there. Yeah, so this is early reading.
Sorry, early reading, K1, early reading.
Yeah, assessment of just early reading skills, could take these one-on-one with their teacher. And so you can see on the left side, it's a little, the graphs are a little bit confusing, but on the left side is their risk level, like anywhere from high risk to advanced is on here, and then advanced and low risk are actually put together in this graph. And then on the right side, you have a growth graph. So this is from fall to winter, and for some reason, they use the same colors for two different graphs, so that's what makes it confusing. The flat growth, it goes from flat, modest, difficult to aggressive growth for the growth graph.
And so that's really, really what we're looking for. We just want to look at growth, and I know that's the SU goal too. So we want to see all our kids improving. So we can go to the next one. So the next one is for grades two and three, CBM reading.
Yeah, and this one is words per minute, so how quickly and accurately they can read on their assessments. So you can see here, for this one, they broke out advanced. I'm not sure how come, but for this one, they did. So same graph setup here, and you can see the fall to winter growth on the right-hand side.
And this one, we rather our kids read slowly and accurately than comprehend and speed read.
And this one, for a little context, like is a little, it's, the kids see like how much time they have left, and it's pretty, it's a lot of pressure on them. So if they have like, they have one minute, and they have to read them, and then they might get stuck on a word, so you may get, trying to decode one, may get stuck there for like even 10 seconds, and that really can kind of plummet your words per minute. So this one, for a little context around that, that's why we say like, we really want them to read accurately, and then they can speed up their reading. Accuracy most important.
So next page, auto reading.
Yep, and this one, so this measures just a bunch of different kinds of skills for older students, grades four to nine. So this might throw on there like a morpheme, and then we'll ask them what the meaning is, or vocabulary word or something like that. So you can see the growth there, too.
Next one.
This has, this is like what you would think of with an assessment. This has reading passages and questions that go along with it. Read the passage, it's not timed or anything like that. You just read it and then, you know, answer the questions that go along with it. Fiction, nonfiction.
Now we're moving into math.
So here you can see our K1 math, significant, a lot of low risk there. And, yeah, this is fantastic. So again, same kind of thing, one-on-one early math skills that they might have.
So this is like, this is incredible.
Yeah.
So
So what I'm looking at is, you want to see kids that are pink or purple, not the red.
Right, and really, that just means it's just a little fat, flat growth.
They're learning.
Right, and so when you, I mean, Chris has seen these chats when I send to him, he's like, check it out. This is incredible when you see this for, for K1, if you have 90% of your kids.
And that also often will lead to flat growth, because students who are
Meeting or above, yeah.
Yeah, may sometimes have a slower growth, because they're like advanced or already at that point, so they can, it's normed, but they still can fall into that category sometimes.
I think I've asked it before, who specifically, if we can find that out, who came up with that terminology?
What terminology?
And this test, flat growth, which is
FastBridge?
Yeah, FastBridge, whoever writes FastBridge.
Love to know that.
Yeah.
It does not, it's
It's oxymoron.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Educational tool, flat growth.
Yeah.
Make it up.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we're moving into two through AMATH.
And this one, same thing you'd think of, you get a math problem, you have to solve it, no timed on this one. So, you know, might be longer problems, covers different operations and all of that kind of thing.
Yeah, you're going to
Slide 14, the next one.
Yeah. So Mike and I sit down and look at these, and, I mean, we're very pleased. So we just listed, obviously, we're continuing to reduce percentage of students in flat growth for oxymoron.
Yeah, our students and our teachers work so hard.
So hard.
This is such a good recognition of them.
And next up are similarly to what we discussed in the fall, is just Mike and I supervision evaluation, our MTSS process, having time during PLCs to talk about data and instruction, and then ongoing professional development is crucial, especially since we have an updated Bridges III program, and we're in year two of UFLY, which is our phonics program for kindergarten through second grade.
17, Chris.
Please.
Thank you.
So this is where we get to look at us compared to the district. So the district is on the left, and then Rutland Town School is on the right.
And the left bar is fall compared to winter of this year.
Correct.
Of course, we don't have spring yet. So back, this is, goes back to reading, early reading skills.
Yeah, so early reading K1, you can go to the next slide, Chris.
That's the words per minute, CBM. Auto, various skills, vocab, more means.
Yep.
A reading.
Two through nine, and then early math, again.
And then last one is AMATH.
Yep.
So that just compares risk with district to school.
Me too. Do you have any questions?
You can break that down by, by grade and things. Do you see like, any, uh, any trend in like, if they become, like, if there's more growth or any trends like as they grow, like just adolescent-wise, like ability-wise, or, or no? I don't know, I just see like, so, like, just watching my kids, I, I see like more accountability and things in my eighth grader than, than accountability that I see in my sixth grader. So I just didn't know if like, they understand the importance of the test and things at the older grades, and they
Yeah, and I think some things have changed. I know we have a new MTSS process. Prior to that, when we had interventionist, because some kids were like, this doesn't mean much to me, and I would say, well, you know, if you don't do well on these tests at the time, it was maps. I said, that's when you have to go to intervention, because we need to help you before you go to high school. So that was a carrot or a stick, I guess you'd say for them, because they're like, oh, I don't want to do that. That would motivate them, but we have such good systems in place that their teachers then pull them and work with them if, if needed. But with usually eighth grade, like those eighth grade VIT cap scores and stuff, like we, sometimes it's just like your seniors in high school, they've kind of checked out. So we try to get them, but usually when they come back from DC, that's when they're done.
Fortunately, they'll do VIT cap. Obviously, we're VIT cap now.
Right, which is good.
And I think it's, you know, if you mean trends with the kids, like if there are certain grades or areas.
Oh, that's what you're talking about.
I think they're, you know, it's unique. Like I, we have EST meetings, we look at data every Tuesday morning for, you know, a few hours even with families and parents. Sometimes you'll see kind of like a curve, and sometimes, kind of just depends. Fortunately now, since we've had, and been taking FastBridge now for the past two full academic years, I believe, we have a good baseline for that and can kind of see. So I think each, you know, each kiddo is unique, you know, kind of depends.
I mean, it's just in my, like, as, as a parent, like the conversations that we've ever had, if it's like something that seems off, it's nice how far they can dig in, you know? It's like, I mean, for, it's like, you know, eight times six, or eight times eight, 16, you know? It's like, no, it's not six, but this is, just didn't even pay attention to the fact that they were looking for multiplication versus, you know, whatever. It's like, you know, so they're mastering the skill in the classroom, but, you know, so at least they can dig in and be like, whoa, why is this off, you know? So
Yeah, we had, and it's funny you bring that up, because we had, our key literacy coaching came in, and so when we were having conversations about VIT cap, obviously, we've been coming up, we talked about, I think it was in Massachusetts, they had We talked about, I think it was in Massachusetts, they had a classroom, and the teacher like realized that on their, whatever their assessment is, they use the word essay. And the students didn't know what essay means. So then if you get, that's a huge portion of even the VIT cap assessment, it's, the, the essay piece of it is one big piece. So if a kid doesn't know what the word essay means, like, we don't realize that necessarily, right? Like, we might say like, give me a multi-paragraph paper, or whatever the case, you know?
A narrative, yeah.
Or narrative, or, yeah.
Yeah.
So those things pop up, and we try to teach those, use practice tests, all of that.
Well, like you said, timed versus untimed, and like, you know, when, when they see that time, they're rushing through, they just, you know.
Yeah, and so, well, that's why it's great that our teachers know kids, because we may have a student that like bombs the section, and it could be anything. Like, it could be if it's, they see that clock ticking. And so teachers during EST will meet with Mike and the team and be like, I am not concerned, I pulled this kid aside, and he can clearly do this, it's just bad day, pressure of time.
Reading slowly.
Reading slowly. So there's certain, we give them different assessments, just to see what help do they need.
Excellent. Moving on, finance.
Let's see, these are the slides, and this is the stuff to combat, you know. Not going to discount that education is expensive in Iran, but the often narrative with that is, our kids are failing. And they're not. Like, we have data, we have this kind of stuff that the public, that people who are coming out to vote down the budget never, ever look at, and this is what we need to perpetuate. This is our job as governance to make sure, at this level, our kids aren't failing, and they're not. And if you put our numbers up against the district, the state, they're really good. If you put our numbers up against the rest of this country, it becomes astronomically better. When, when people reference, South Carolina's got the fourth lowest cost of student, they also have the average reading level of fifth grade throughout the entire state. Like, we have strong, educated kids. It's not cheap, but, you know, we have a good product that comes with good money. So here, over, over and over, let us the editor, kids are failing, kids aren't failing. We're not failing these kids. These kids, we're failing them if we start taking away teachers, if we start taking away programs, if we start taking away this stuff. Our kids are very well-educated in this state, and we can only do better. So this is the data you should point people to, to say, hey, it's public, we're, we're presenting this, you show up to say no to a budget, but you never see the data behind this. And how well these kids are excelling, and from where they're coming from to that. What I would like to see the state do, and I don't know if we do, is tracking, you know, how, how does, and the metric's always moving, because we're really doing Fastbridge for two years, but, you know, for the kids that fully go through and attach pre-K, full-on, two-year program, are they stepping into kindergarten better off? Than kids that have been? Some of the data they should be tracking. Or keeping the metrics consistent over 10, 15 years, so we can tell, like, hey, how do, how do we do compared to 15 years ago? Oh, don't know, it was a different metric, and and that's what the state should be doing, and the legislatures that are passing things like, you know, universal food, which is great, but is, is it impacting, we already had that going on, so if they really want to chop down the money, start following the metrics, what's, what's impacting things and what isn't.
And I will just say, I think through a lot of our student groups, whether it was like Up for Learning last year, or TA ambassadors, peer leaders, and even some of our teachers have just advocated that, there's a lot of pressure, there's a lot of testing for kids. And yes, that's, you know, that, that's our job, but I think there's some things that, you know, kid may just look forward to library on one day, or lifetime sports. There were so many, you know, I spoke to a parent last year that said, Sarah, I wouldn't have voted for that budget. You didn't keep that. You know, my kid struggles in school every day academically, and this is the one thing she looked forward to. Like, this dark winter months, like this was the one thing that she found, I'm good at this. And I said, she's good at a lot of other things, but I just think balancing, there's a lot of pressure on kids, there's a lot of kids with anxiety. And I just, you know, Mike was cheering on the kid that was a young elementary kid that started VIT cap today, that was so anxious and so nervous, and it's like, you're in third grade, it's okay. You know, do the best that you can, it's one test, but I think it's just to be mindful of that, too. This is a lot of pressure that we're putting on these little, little people. And we just want to, you know, we want to see growth, that's what we want to see, right?
Thank you for going over all that with us.
Trying to do it quickly. Thank you, Mike.
Anything more?
Doesn't essay mean pal in Spanish, too?
Well, then I asked my daughter, I was like,
They draw a picture.
Like, you wrote essays, and she's like, no, we just wrote narratives. I'm like, there you go. Like, she was writing essays, but it's just nuances and semantics that, yeah.
Pictures of their friends.
Tim, I know VIT cap was still on the agenda, but Lisa had sent an email, Lisa Madison, that that would be pushed back to the April, so the 23, 24.
Yeah.
So I've been, okay, I just want to.
They're taking it today, so, right?
This is last year's, it was finally, they had embargoed for so long, but we will be able to kind of go through that with you.
Remember, they said you can get those results instantly, we have this test.
But I, but I know that Secretary Saunders has recognized that's that we need to get the results back quicker, and that's something which she is committed to do, doing for us. Is hopefully by the summer, we'll have our results back, so we can begin planning for next year. Because it is, as Sarah and Mike can attest, when you're looking at the VIT cap results, sitting with the classroom teacher in January, February, half the year is already gone. You really need that data, you know, data really in, you know, June, July, so start making those adjustments day one, so. And they're, they're aware of that, and they understand that, so.
Look to April for that. All right, moving on, finance.
Louis had said that if there are any questions, go ahead and email him, he is checking email sporadically, but.
Are there any questions on? We'll move on from that. All right, personnel, contract recommendations. I do not need to read all these, is that right? They'll be in the minutes?
We can include these as a list in the minutes, so you can just make note of that. Day as presented, and unless we include the minutes, we'll do that.
I would be looking for a motion to approve contract recommendations as presented, that will be found in the minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And one resignation for one Colby Heskock. That doesn't want two rolls in one school.
Still going to do snakes, though?
We'll see, maybe I can make my appearance.
So I would entertain a motion for that resignation.
I'll make a motion for that resignation.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. There is not a chair report, because there wasn't a chair leading into this meeting, so. So we will move on from that. As I mentioned, upcoming meeting, Tuesday, April 8. Is there any future agenda items that we know at this point that we would want added? I would say I usually meet, what, like about 10 days in advance of the, is that what?
Yes, usually about a week and a half, two weeks before.
So when I put something on the calendar to meet with Chris, I'll just shoot out a quick email, just, does anyone have any agenda items they want, you know, put on, and I'll do that. Just what I had, the notes I had just based on the meeting was the onboarding that will be discussed at the SU level, right, that we can bring back.
And I'll have that as part of my super teams report, we can discuss that at the April board meeting as well.
And on the, at the February meeting, Spanish was brought up, you weren't here, Sarah, but Spanish was brought up to just briefly chat about in April, as far as like, because I think, what was it, when's Rutland City come and like assess the students for like, the incoming students for Rutland City, right?
Yeah, I think Teresa came, Teresa Sunderland came to the last board meeting in the spring and gave an update. And they're not able to share on specific students, although I kind of argued with the person there, because I said, they're still our kids, and we pay for them to go there, so they should be our records. And it's good feedback. So I did ask, at the time, Bianca McKean, I asked her just for overall feedback, and I can go back to my notes, and I can call I think it's Brett Lotola is the new assistant principal there that I can speak with, and she had said, your kids are great. The only question she has is that there are some needy kids, and they've had to create special programs, and she's like, I don't know what magic you have going on in that building, but when they come to us, we've had to create like schools within schools for some kids with varying needs. She said it was, there wasn't any gaps. I said, anything in math or writing? And she said, no, there, there wasn't, they talked about as an admin team. And so I think Teresa spoke to a Spanish teacher at Rutland, that's how she got some more information. So what would you like me to bring back in regards to Spanish? Because our kids, not all of them go to Rutland?
So based on the conversation that, my recollection, right, was that we, that the board was just looking for a bit of a temperature gauge from Ms. Sunderland, like, you know, is what we're doing still what she thinks is right, right? And, and is the full scope from K through A the right metric? And not that we're looking to take, I guess reassure her that we're not looking to get rid of Spanish, but just making sure that she can give two thumbs up that that's still the best interest of students, right? I mean, I'm not looking to give direction to the Spanish department, or, you know, any other department for that matter, but just a check-in, right?
Okay.
I think that's what we were.
Yeah, I think the February 28th meeting, did I make that date up? Whenever our last, not the special meeting, February 11th. Yeah, I think it's get a gauge, a temperature gauge on.
Sure.
I think that'd be, you know, potentially this board, but as well as the admin, we were kind of discussing like, what's the purpose of this program? Is it exposure? Which would be broad-based K to eight, or are we really trying to, you know, have the kids walking into high school, wherever they go, with a leg up? With that, that, a solid base, so they could walk into Spanish 2? Is it, you know, or is it simply just having some broad-based exposure? And I think there was some confusion. And again, I don't know where the authority lies to say what we'd like. You know, me personally, I think I'd love for a presentation on, you know, if our kids are going to be diving into Spanish, they should be ready for Spanish 2, and having then our Spanish director to say, yeah, this is what it's going to take, not just 10 minutes from K to 8, but I'd, I'd rather focus on more exposure, fifth through eighth, again, with, working with you guys. I mean, I don't know what the, this temperature, this board, or even, you know, you can get back to us, Sarah, like, what, as a community, what, you know, if you're, you're trying to get our kids to excel at, at this language, then we should, are we doing the right things? I think that's where we were going with that.
That's been our goal, is to get them, so they complete Spanish 1, so they can start Spanish 2. But some kids, I know that Teresa had recommended some kids, but they, due to sports or timing, they're like, I'm just going to take Spanish 1, so it's kind of an easy, it's the end of the day. I play sports, so you can recommend, but ultimately, it's up to the parent and child what they sign up for. So, yeah, I'll have her, it sounds like just like last time. What's the goal?
Just a check-in.
Yep, perfect, on it.
Understanding her schedule, and there's only one of her, so what's, what's best to maximize.
I didn't, I didn't excel in Spanish, I'm not, I'm gonna, you know, abstain largely on my Spanish grades, but I would say our, you know, I have an Annika, our exchange student, last year, it's shocking, you know, how they walk into a household and how fluent they are, like, you know. Like, you know, just, you know, shocking how fluent they are. Because it, like, I mean, she was only, she's a year older, a year and a half older than Sophia, and like, if I dropped her in Germany, you know, she would not have survived, you know, that day, you know?
You never know.
You know what I mean?
Immersion laws, we use.
Language immersion, yeah, yeah.
Kind of have to.
Yeah, she's, she was pretty swift. Excellent. So, so have that in my notes, the onboarding piece. Any further budget communication? And then the VIT cap, 2023, 24, we'll put on that agenda. And like I said, you know, any, any added stuff that you want to have a conversation about, I'll let you know when I'm meeting with Chris, so you can keep me, keep me abreast. All right. Teacher, community comments, nothing, nothing to add. No executive session, good and farewell, our welfare, farewell. A little of both, right? Farewell, everyone, enough. Good and welfare. Colin, you want to?
I'll jump off, I'm happy we had two new board members, excited, thrusting into the community, but to Sarah's, to tack on to Sarah's, you know, my passion project, Vermont Sport, or Lifetime Sports, sadly, we finished up last Thursday, but, you know, all, all I got was positive reports from every, every area that we were in, that I was, I was obviously dedicated to the mountain, but each, each rink, arena, the rock climbing center, everything I heard, our kids are tremendous, our teachers, our parents, our community as well, acumen-ing these, these young people to be respectful, and, you know, the whole, math scores are one thing, and this is reading, but you were trying to present decent human beings. They can, they can give something back, to watch these kids support and urge each other, push themselves out of their comfort zone on the mountain is just tremendous to see, but more, more than that, watching the kids on bonanza, learning to ski and struggling, but then watching them support each other through this struggle, and one kid not even know how, you know, one kid who doesn't know how to do it, encouraging the other kid, and they don't, and just pushing each other. And we didn't have any broken bones this year. It's tremendous, and I, I love, I love this part of the year to get through the dark months, but having these kids exposed to the outdoors of, of Vermont. And, and some of them probably potentially turning it into a career later on down the road, seeing things they never would have seen if we don't give them this opportunity. So I appreciate the admin support, the board support, the community support, the parents' support, that we had tons of parents up there helping us, and, and all the, all of our locations, so it's tremendous to see, and, and you feel like a community, like that's what Rutland Town was to me growing up, that it's not just a place to drop your kids off. Have them babysat or, or taught, it's, it's really seeing all of our parents and kids work together with strangers and, and part of the public, so. Great, great, great year. Even, we didn't have as good weathers last year, but it was great.
Can I just say something really quickly about Lifetime Sports? I want to say thank you, Colin, for all the work that you do. And also, it's, I do the skiing piece of it, so it's so amazing, from eighth grade down to like the youngest skier, they'll be on the chairlifts, and they're just, hi! They're so supportive of each other. And that, for me, is just something I haven't witnessed before, and I thought it was really sweet, just like saying hi to each other, cheering each other on, like, they all know each other really well, which I think is really impressive. And they're super kind, like the eighth graders are so kind, and, you know, my kindergartner, and, yeah.
I just thought, bringing, bringing the Lifetime, and I'm bringing it back from years ago to, to now. And just to see the excitement and everybody's, everybody's excited. There isn't anybody that's not excited about doing this, and I'm just so proud of everybody that has worked together to bring this back to Rutland Town School, something that we, we had for so many years, and went so well, and it proven over time, to come back just as strong as, as, as ever, and being a little part of it. And the other day, my grandson did three tummels in a row. I'm like, what, what, I, where did that come from? So it's just, you know, that's something that he tried, and next time he'll maybe try something different, but it was like, just to see all these kids enjoying themselves, and it's like pulling something out like that, it was like, oh, that was amazing, so. Yeah, I'm just glad we did that.
Me too, thank you.
I was telling Sarah earlier that I think that all the years I worked here, I was really preparing for this kind of role. I really feel it, yeah, because you reach out further than, of course, my classroom was number one, my students, but then reaching out, I always wanted to reach out to the public, so this is so, I feel fortunate, and I'm glad I can do it. The other thing is that we have Suples for Hunger coming up, can I mention?
Yeah.
Or tell the detail? It's, I'm part of a group called Delta Kappa Gamma, it's a teacher sorority. Some of our former teachers are part of that group, Carol Barbegallo, Paula Townsend, Marcia Barron, Lynn Ryan, and Tina Ron. Some of our former teachers are part of that group, Carol Barba Gallo, Paula Townsend, Marcia Baron, Lynn Ryan and Tina Ron. And Suples for Hunger is held at Rutland High School and it'll be April tenth. Tickets are twenty dollars, if you Google Suples Rutland dot org, you'd find information. And it's a fundraiser for the food shelves, so it's important work. Our former art teacher makes the bowls, if you've ever been. She makes the bowls with her students, so I have a little collection of bowls, they're so beautiful. The soup is good too, because the soup comes from all sorts of restaurants around here. So when you pay the twenty dollars, you get your beautiful soup, dessert, bread and your bowl. And you see all sorts of people, it's a nice community event, so thanks for.
Give it for the newsletter on Friday too, if you want.
So I got a few things to share, first, Linda, I just want to say like, when you had our kids, I remember you saying, oh, Wes, Wes is a friend to all, so that's where I see you on this board, so I'm so happy that you're here with us to be a friend to all. Thanks for the opportunity to have a role as chair. Colin said like these kids like found their way out of a comfort zone, which for me, this is out of my comfort zone, so that's partly why I, you know, was willing to accept it. And a plug to, to the GLADZIC, which is the fifth and sixth grade basketball tournament, which is hosted at West Rutland, which is also in our supervisor union, they've been putting on a, a great show over there. So Rutland Town Boys are playing Thursday night, opponent to be determined, I think right now at seven o'clock, was that tip-off? So that's the semifinals, eight o'clock on Thursday night.
So who are, who could they play?
Middlebury or West Rutland. Yeah, and then another bracket will likely be a different Middlebury team or Christ the King, so. So eight o'clock that night and seven thirty on Friday night, if they make it to the finals. Sounds like PEG TV will be there to video some of the, the future stars. But it, it, overall, it's just a great experience for the kids, I think like, you know, they experience things on the court that they don't get to see in fifth and sixth grade basketball. You can press, you can play zone, you can do other things, so it acclimates them to that. But they, they announce all the lineups before each game, so they're called out, you know, by name and number, just like you would in a high school game. They, they play music at halftime, they have like dance offs and stuff like that, halftime to give out like certificates and things as part of the, the booster, boosters and everything, so it's a great experience. I encourage anyone to come out that is able to. Three dollars to get in, dollar for students, concessions, you know, it's, it's pretty packed. I mean, it's been a few hundred people each night, so it's a lot for some eleven, twelve year olds playing basketball.
Yeah.
That's all I have, so anyone else have anything to offer before?
Good start on the time.
I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.